This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for May 2nd, 2022. Please be advised that the City Council meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format with the ability for the public to connect virtually using the GoToMeeting access information that you can find on our website. I have a roll call, please.
Mayor Bremel?
Here.
Alderman Ashower? Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Chrisell?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
And Alderman Widener?
Here.
Thank you. And Alderman Ashower was excused for this evening. Okay, would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get to the business of the meeting, we have several other things to accomplish. Three of them would be proclamations for this evening, so I will share those with you now. This is National Police Week from May 11th to the 17th, and the proclamation goes like this: "To recognize National Police Week 2022 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy, whereas there are over 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Warrenville Police Department, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, nearly 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty; and whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC; and whereas 619 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, including 319 COVID-19-related, 62 firearms-related, 58 traffic-related, 84 felonious assaults, and 147 officers who died in previous years; and whereas the service and sacrifice of all these officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's annual candlelight vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2022; and whereas the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 11th through the 17th; and whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag should be flown at half-staff; and therefore be it resolved that the City of Warrenville formally designates May 11th through 17th, 2022 as Police Week in Warrenville and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation, and we certainly do appreciate our excellent department. Also, May is Bike Month, whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Warrenville's scenic beauty; and whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Warrenville and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, commuting events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride; and whereas Warrenville's road and trail system attracts bicyclists each year, providing economic well health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits; and whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve residents' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Warrenville, improving traffic safety, supporting student learning outcomes, and reducing congestion, and wear on our streets and roads; and whereas the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, the League of American Bicyclists, schools, parks, and recreation districts, police departments, public health departments, hospitals, companies, and civic groups will be promoting bicycling during the month of May 2022; and whereas these groups are also promoting bicycle tourism year-round to attract more visitors, to enjoy our local restaurants, hotels, retail establishments, cultural and scenic attractions; and whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education, and in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. And now therefore I, David L. Bremel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Bike Month in Warrenville, and I urge all residents to join me in this special observance and get those minutes in for your mayor's fitness challenge. We intend to get our bike out if it ever warms up. National Drinking Water Week, May 1st through the 7th, 2022. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy; and whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access the safe water; and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which the future generations depend; and whereas each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water; and whereas May 1st through the 7th marks National Drinking Water Week sponsored by the American Waterworks Association. Now therefore I, David L. Bremel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim May 1st through the 7th, 2022 as National Drinking Water Week in the City of Warrenville, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to recognize the vital role water plays in their daily lives as well as others, and to recognize the contributions which the Utility Division employees make every day to ensure there is clean, safe drinking water. And that is certainly a worthy objective. If you're familiar with what's happening in the Southwest, water is a huge problem, and we are very blessed in this part of the country not to have that problem. Okay, proclamations taken care of. We have a welcome this evening. Sarah Phelan is here to tell us exactly what's happening in the world that's very, very interesting, very close to home. Welcome, Sarah, and friends.
And many friends. So, thank you, Mayor Bremel, and the City Council for welcoming us here this evening. I have a couple of hats on tonight. So first, I know on the agenda is the IDEX recommendation for the May celebrations that fall into different heritage groups. So we're appreciative that you continue to do that. The month of May, we also celebrate widely in the United States Cinco de Mayo, which is not as widely celebrated in Mexico because some popular beliefs of that that's Mexican Independence Day, which actually doesn't happen until September. But it is to commemorate the battle of when Mexico defeated the French in Puebla, which was a very big deal during the French occupation of Mexico, which many people don't even know about. So it is hold a lot of heritage and importance in Puebla. But tonight, I am also very excited to welcome some of our artistanos from Mexico City who are staying here in Warrenville at the Hyatt Place as they prepare for the installation of the Alebrijes at Cantini Park, which we are all very, very excited about, and happy to have them here in Warrenville. I also want to thank the Tourism Council for providing us a grant. We will be doing a workshop at the end of June at the museum here in Warrenville, and excited to bring and have a specific Alebrijes that's Ivan Albright-inspired that'll live at the museum afterwards. I'm going to introduce Fernando Ramirez, who's the president of the Mexican Cultural Center, DuPage, who is here with the artistanos to introduce them, and they are just going to say just a couple of things about being excited about the upcoming project.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. This is really something very important for us, to be able to showcase Alebrijes, which is something that's just been talked about a little bit in the past couple of years because of cocoa and other things that have been coming up, and this is a great opportunity that we're going to be having be able to do with Cantini. So to have the maestros here to come out from Ciudad de México is wonderful and a great opportunity, and to be able to express the excitement that they have. And I know the this great partnership is going to be so cool in the next couple of months. Everybody's going to get a chance to be able to see these massive pieces that they've been working since September, and then to be able to get here and everything. So anyway, so we got Arturo, Maestro Alberto, Maestro Miriam, and Roberto, who are just, thank you very much. We are, we are missing two that they're on their way here. It's been just been complicated with the COVID and vaccinations and stuff, so but we should be having them in the next couple of days. So but we are very excited, and we can't wait to meet you guys and see be able to showcase this to you guys when you get a chance.
Wonderful. I presume that you could give us a little bit of information about when this is going to open and how long it's going to last, or maybe where people could go. It's certainly been in the paper, and the colorful pictures we've seen of the artwork are, it's pretty exciting to see that we'll be able to get that in person pretty soon. So maybe some details would be good to get out right now.
Absolutely. So there will be 48 of the sculptures, 18 that are very large, and 30 smaller ones. They will be opening June at Cantini. Stay tuned for an exact release date as we are anxiously awaiting their arrival, but we hope that there will be a celebration that the public will be invited to on June 12th, but stay tuned for that. And then they'll be up through October, so there'll be plenty of opportunities to see them. And the artistanos will be here through the beginning of July. Since they're coming to the United States, we want to make sure that they stay through the Fourth of July and experience that because most of them have never been here before. And there is a cantini.org backslash Alebrijes that has all of the upcoming programs, events. You can find that on the website, the MCC, the Mexican Cultural Center's website, as well as the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is one of our partners in this program as well.
Wonderful. Well, welcome to Warrenville. We're glad you could come and bring your artwork so we can enjoy it, and I hope you have a wonderful visit.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hola, mi nombre es Manuel Arturo Saratortiz. Soy artista plástico y visual en la Ciudad de México.
My name is Manuel Arturo.
Sarat.
Sarat. And he is a practicing, I think that's a tradition for a look at, he's a study particularly a certain field of construction, which I have no idea how to translate that into, but it's very specific and very.
Okay. Me siento muy honrado de venir a compartir con ustedes. De verdad es todo esto ha sido increíble desde el inicio que arrancó este proyecto. Y pues nosotros traemos un mensaje de la Ciudad de México sobre situaciones que suceden que son increíbles, son mágicas, cosas que suceden en nuestro corazón, en nuestra cabeza, y compartimos con nuestros alumnos, con todas las personitas que son parte de este proyecto. Entonces, muchas gracias por la calurosa bienvenida. Estoy seguro que van a disfrutar mucho la exposición. Y aguante porque es increíble. Muchas gracias, mucho gusto.
He said a lot, and I'm going to try to do the best I can to remember exactly everything he said. He said it's just something that is something that comes from their heart. They're, they're so honored to be able to be here and to be able to share this with you guys. It's something that they're all, they're all teachers, and they have, you know, this is something that they teach to be able to, to their students, and it's something that's very important that passes on to families and learning. So this is something that to just wait, and you'll, you'll, you'll be very excited about what you guys see in the next couple of months.
Wonderful.
Muchas gracias por esta oportunidad de participar en su país. Mi nombre es Alberto Moreno Fernández, y quería decirles que su ciudad es increíble, está preciosa, y para nosotros es un sueño estar aquí. Muchas gracias.
He said, he is just honored to be here. He said that your city is so beautiful and it's incredible. So it's so much a pleasure to be able to be here, witness this, and to be able to meet everyone. So it's, it's, he's just very appreciative of everything that everybody has been in the little time that they've been here. So it's, they've been great. So he said, thank you very much.
Oh, no.
Hola.
She wrote it down, so I'm like, oh, boy.
Hola, mi nombre es Miriam Salgado.
My name is Miriam Salgado.
Estoy muy feliz de poder compartir este momento con ustedes.
I'm very happy to be able to share this moment with you guys.
Quiero agradecerles por la hospitalidad y el cariño con el que nos han recibido.
I want to thank you guys for your hospitality and all the kindness that you guys have shared with us.
Nos han hecho sentir como si estuviéramos en casa.
You guys have felt, made us feel like we're at home.
Una vez más, la cultura es la encargada de unir a dos comunidades. En este bonito proyecto, Alebrijes, seres del sueño.
The, that, once again, the, this, I'm trying to translate. This, these communities will come together because of these pieces like Los Alebrijes and the Creatures of a Dream World project.
En este proyecto, nosotros dejamos nuestra alma, nuestro corazón, nuestros sentimientos. Y pues la verdad es un gran honor estar aquí, y este, pues yo me siento muy feliz.
With this project, they leave their heart, their spirit, everything that they have in this, and they're so happy to be able to be here and share this with you guys.
Y pues bueno, quiero agradecer por todos los esfuerzos que se han realizado para que nosotros podamos estar aquí, en esta maravillosa ciudad, que sin duda es la ciudad cultural de los Estados Unidos. Muchas gracias.
Definitely, this is a town that cares about culture and differences and looks to be able to share differences and be able to be able to come together. So she wants to thank you so much for that, that opportunity and to be sharing this with the city, with you guys. Thank you.
Sorry, I was taking pictures. So we thank you very much for welcoming us. We're very excited that the artistanos will be here in Warrenville for the duration of their stay, and that it also then contributes back to the tourism tax grant as well by funding heads in, in the hotel rooms. So that's always exciting as well. So do stay tuned for all of the other dates and information that will be coming out, and we look forward to seeing everybody at Cantini as well. So thank you very much.
As do we. Thank you so much for coming tonight. And make sure they understand how much we appreciate the effort they're putting into this, and we all look forward to seeing the work.
Absolutely. Yep, we will, for sure. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. How exciting and what fun, something to look forward to. Okay, we'll move on to the part of our meeting we set aside for citizens' comments. There are three ways that can be done at every meeting. One would be emails. Do we have any emails this evening? Okay. The other is on, online. It looks like we have a couple of people that would like to speak online. Let's see, let's, let's start with Mitch. Mitch, would you like to start off, introduce yourself, and then say what you have to say?
Good greetings, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for your time. My name is Mitch Adamas. I live at 29W 606 Mack Road. We have been here many times to argue the flaws of a path on the north side of Mack Road. We are not asking to put a path in the Class 4 woodland. We are asking to put it in the mode right-of-way south of Mack Road that is dominated by common or weedy species. The Class 4 woodland gets managed, as an example, by the controlled burn done in the spring of 2021. The right-of-way gets mowed, not burnt. The aesthetic advantage is also obvious on the south side. Utilities are extensive on the north side. There is no conflicting issue on the south side. Many trees would have to be removed from private property, and intrusiveness would range from substantial to severe. Another flaw not addressed is the lack of trail from Williams Road east to the regional trail. Many times I have seen people hiking in the grass on the south side of the road. A south side alignment would address all of these issues. Perhaps the biggest issue is the safety of the users of the proposed path. The day will come when a small person is flying down the hill on a bike or a skateboard and meets up with a car or truck that frequently parks or turns around in the multiple driveways. We, the homeowners, have no desire to be involved with the hospital bills and lawsuits that result from that. To claim that it would cost the Forest Reserve District a little extra money to do it right in one of the richest counties in the state is not an argument that carries a lot of weight. It is in their charter to provide these services and facilities. Public trails belong on public lands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you.
Pam Spivak?
Hello?
Go ahead, Pam.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hello, my name is, yes, hello, my name is Pam Spivak. I am once again speaking on the proposed Mack Road bike path. On October 14th, 2020, there was a public meeting regarding this trail. All my neighbors attended in person spoke and raised their concerns, as did a number of other participants. Following this on November 18th, 2020, Christine Hocking, Phil Kuchler, and two ERA representatives came out to my house. Using their IDOT sanctioned blueprints as a reference, they measured and placed flags, which are still in place, to mark off the part of my property impacted, a maximum of eight permanent and 16 temporary feet. Recently, I requested through FOIA, the Freedom of Information Act, the applicable blueprints. Imagine my shock when I now find a permanent easement of 20 feet, an additional 12 feet, which is more than double the prior requirement. Taken together with a larger 25-foot temporary easement, you are talking 45 feet. This is not even including the 10-foot right-of-way. All I can think is, oops, another change in what has been a mistake-prone project from the very beginning. All these critical miscalculations surely do not inspire confidence in the design. Can you realistically expect someone to agree to this? I am sure if it was your property, you would not be on board either. Also, based on this unfavorable track record so far, I am not quite confident in the plans to prevent the increased risk of additional flooding in my front yard. Two other important points. We are continuously adamant that we do not want to be liable for injury lawsuits, as safety has constantly been stressed as a priority, and the danger of these driveway crossings have been emphasized and documented. In addition, the utility relocation area has yet to be confirmed. So here is another potential problem. There is no aspect of this project that is beneficial to the Mack Road residents. In fact, it will have a tremendous negative effect on our property values and aesthetics. We are passionate about our homes, having spent substantial, substantial time, money, and effort on landscaping improvements, including pillars, lighting, split-rail fences, and plantings to create a beautiful environment. Just for your awareness, as you, the councilman, may be, have been misinformed, as I was, by a member of the Warrenville staff who stated to me that with the proposed permanent easement, the city would only be paying the Mack Road residents a comparable small fee for the use of the land for the bike path. This is inaccurate. After checking with several eminent domain attorneys, I was advised that with a condemnation, permanent easement ownership notwithstanding, we, the homeowners, would be entitled to just compensation. The following three sentences explain how just compensation is determined. Property owners have the right to a jury trial in Illinois to determine the amount of just compensation. Just compensation means the fair cash market value of the property at its highest and best use on the date of value. It includes the value for the property taken and any diminution in value to the owner's remaining property referred to as damages to the remainder. Unfortunately, it seems that warriors ultimately may need to settle these legitimate legal issues in the court system. In closing, I want to repeat, public trails belong on public lands, not private property. Thank you for seriously considering my comments this evening. And my neighbor Patty, I register to her, and she's going to say a few words.
Hi, good evening. My name's Patty Velsich. I live at 29W 660 Mack Road. Years ago, Warrenville wanted to annex five of our homes into Warrenville. All five homeowners went to the meeting. You guys probably weren't even part of this years ago, but all five homeowners said they did not want this. Warrenville did it anyways. Now, the City of Warrenville wants to build a bike path on the same five, five homeowners' property to accommodate a tiny percent of cyclists, which most will not even use this because they prefer the street. This project will use up most of my front yard, take away privacy and the peacefulness we have enjoyed for almost 50 years. The, the Forest Preserve was donated and funded by the people to serve the people. That's where this bike should be built. We will not, I repeat, not relinquish our property to build this bike path. You will have to take us to court and do it by eminent domain. And as the Fifth Amendment states, the government may only exercise this power if they provide just compensation to the property owners. Thank you for listening.
Thank you both for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Okay, we'll go to in-person comments then with Mr. Bob Seabird.
Bob Seabird, Albright Court. The City of Warrenville has had more than $5 million of interfund transfers. As a trained economist and a previous government auditor, we classify these interfund transfers as internal debt. Internal debt because these fund transfers place a claim on the City of Warrenville's future revenue. Also, the state statute requires that the sewer and water capital fund must be paid. The transfer of funds also impacts the cash reserve position of the city and can restrict future expenditures, as you have found out. As such, the citizens of Warrenville deserve a written plan identifying sources and timing of the repayments. This information should be presented on an annual basis. Publication of this information would reach the greatest number of citizens through the monthly newsletter. This would also be a good project for the city treasurer.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else in the audience? Nope, nobody. All right then, we'll move on to official and staff comments. A couple of things tonight. If you read the Sunday Tribune, you saw a very nice article about our very own two brothers, Jason and Jim, 25-year anniversary in our town. Very, very well-written, and we want to congratulate two brothers, both of them on a on having a thriving business and putting Warrenville on the map in a very positive way. So let's hope for another 25 years for them. And as they diversify into other fields, perhaps we'll see some growth. So congratulations, Jim and Jason. A couple of other things. Mayor's Fitness Challenge begins today. This is the 11th Annual Mayor's Fitness Challenge. This year's program kicks off today and will run 10 weeks through July 9th. This year's goal is to log 150 minutes of activity per week or 1,500 minutes to receive an exclusive gift, yet to be determined. Oh, it's gonna be really cool, I can assure you. Special recognition will also be given to participants who beat the mayor's minutes. Always difficult because I make extra effort this time of year, but I'll do my best. We'll see, I'm getting older. Just what that activity is entirely up to you. You don't have to, you know, get any doctor's prescription or any description, whatever you think is gardening, riding bikes, walking, walking the dogs, playing with your kids, whatever activity you think is extra and could be logged in is up to you. So we trust you to be responsible in that way. But I got my 40-minute bike ride in this afternoon, so I'm off to a good start. And join us, it's very easy to do. Registration is now open. Just go to the city's website and find the Mayor's Fitness Challenge Log. Log in and off you go and keep track of your minutes. And log in daily or weekly or whatever, but do join us. It's a lot of fun and it's a good way to, I guess, have some fun, a little bit of competition, and get some activity that we all need after two years of COVID. Couple of other things. We have the document shredding and electronic recycling event coming up. The Police Department will host this event for Warrenville residents on Saturday, May 7th, in the Bauer Elementary School parking lot at 4 South 241 River Road from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. So it's in the morning or until the trucks are full. It is a very popular event, so keep that in mind. You might want to go early. Paper documents are free and will be limited to three banker-sized boxes or three paper grocery bags. Recycling of smaller electronics is free, while larger electronics will require a prepaid voucher available only at, oh, my goodness, you'll never remember this, go to our website, Go to the website. Paper documents are, we already did that, all right. Full event details, here we go. I should read ahead these things, I guess. Full event details, including voucher costs and drop-off guidelines, can be viewed on the city's website, of course, I knew that. Call the Police Department's non-emergency number if you have any other questions. That's pretty easy, 393-2131, 630-393-2131. So if you have questions, call the department or check it out on the website. And finally, the bike rodeo is coming up on May 14th. The Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, along with the Warrenville Park District, will host the bike rodeo in the Stafford Place Parking Lot Saturday, May 14th, from 9:00 a.m. till noon, another morning activity. The event will feature fun activities and educational materials about bicycle safety. This is a free event. Children can register with a parent or a guardian on the day of the event. Have also, I believe, bike mechanics there to do some mechanical work if you need it and information on wearing helmets, which is also very important. So a couple of good things going on in the community. Clerk, do you have anything this evening? Okay, Alderman. Alderman Widener?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute and say thanks to the members of the Environmental Awareness Group that sponsored the Arbor Day event at Cerny Park this weekend, passing out trees and lots of information about naturalizing your home space and creating a better neighborhood and habitat for wildlife. So thank you to those volunteers. And as we end National Volunteer Week too, I'd once again like to thank all the volunteers that volunteer their time to the city of Warrenville. It really makes us a vibrant community, and a lot of the work that's done could not be done otherwise without their help and assistance. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davlos?
Yes, I'd like to build on what Alderman Widener just said about Arbor Day. So we gave away over 350 trees this Saturday. And we do that every year, and it was, a lot of people showed up. I thought people might be scared off by the rain and the thunder, but it worked out great. I have a couple of trees that I bought. I didn't buy, but I was given it Arbor Day. And now one of them is close to six feet tall, another one's seven feet tall, so they do grow. And so if you didn't get here this year, I hope you look forward. It's always the last Saturday of the month, and it was a really good event. A lot of new people, the mayor planted a ceremonial tree, which was kind of fun, in Cerny Park. So it was just a real fun event. So, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Speaking of trees, I'm gonna go to Public Works Director Kukler. We just made an arrangement with Scares, K. McKenna Scares, to get some special new trees that come to Warrenville, is that the case?
Yes, they're gonna provide 20 of the kind of similar-sized trees as the Arbor Day donations. And the city's gonna plant, Public Works is gonna plant them at different locations in the city. They're overcup oaks, I believe, is the species. They're native to southern Illinois, and the thought is with climate change and things warming up that they might now survive up in this area. So we're gonna plant them in different soil types, different areas of wetness and dryness. And so we'll survey them, include them in our tree inventory, and we'll let Scares know where they're at too, so we can monitor the progress they make. And hopefully, they survive and thrive up here.
So it's a bit of an experiment, but hopefully it'll work out, and those trees will grow, and we'll have them forever.
Yep.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, anyone else? All righty, then, we'll move on to city administrator. Good evening, John.
Thank you, Mayor. Just echo some of the comments about what a nice Arbor Day it was, despite the weather. It didn't cooperate, but I was able to attend with my grandson Oliver, who's six, who thought it was very fascinating. He got a packet of seeds for the Black Eyed Susans, which he's probably gonna plant in my yard. And I have about 2,000 plants that have already propagated from the first packet I got about eight years ago. But we also got a tree, and he's gonna help me plant that in a few days. So passing that information on to not the next generation, the one after that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. City Attorney, good evening, Brooke. Very good. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the agenda for the May 2nd, 2022 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Alderman Kruckenberg, any comments or changes to the agenda for this evening? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved as presented. We have some minutes that need approval also. Alderman Widener?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the April 18th, 2022 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davlos. Any comments, questions? Alderman Goodman?
Yes, I'll need to abstain.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? One. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. The minutes are approved as presented. The consent agenda for this evening, Item 6A, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O2022-16, Approving Tax Amendments to the City Code Zoning Ordinance, Modifying Surfacing Requirements on Residential Driveways. B, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O2022-17, Approving a Temporary Use Permit for the Warrenville Park District's Multicultural Festival on June 11th, 2022, and that's so exciting to look forward to. Good job, Park District. Pardon my little edit there. C, Accept Staff Recommendation and Approve Resolution R2022-18 in Support of Tax Increment Financing. D, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and Approve the Appointment of Jean-Marie Kauf as Chairman of the Environmental Advisory Commission for a one-year term set to expire April 30th, 2023. E, Accept Staff Recommendation and Approve the Revised Inclusion Diversity Equity and Awareness Commission Recommendation to Acknowledge Certain Holidays and Observances in May 2022. F, Receive and File Minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission Meeting Held on March 15th, 2022. G, Receive and File Minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Meeting Held on March 22nd, 2022. H, Receive and File Minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting Held on April 21st, 2022. I, Receive and File Report of Invoices Paid Up to April 26th, 2022 in the amount of $50,558.58, 57 cents, I'm sorry. J, Authorize Expenditures or Invoices Due Honor Before May 16th, 2022 in the amount of $255,564.25. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bremel.
Second.
Oh, go ahead. Second by Alderman Goodman? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Davlos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
And Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Motion carries. The agenda is approved as presented. We have nothing under the regular agenda this evening. No one finished business that needs to be attended to. We have no new business listed either. We do, however, have the need for a closed session this evening. So if I may have the motion with the citation, Alderman Berry?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to go in a closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCS 120 slash, c, parence, 5, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. And 5 ILCS 120 slash 2, parence, c, parence, 21, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06.
Second.
Second by Alderman Goodman. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davlos?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
And Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We are now entering into executive session. We will not be conducting any business after that, so you're free to go about your personal business. Thank you for your attention and your comments this evening, and we'll see you next time.